...Commission, Workstations, February 19th. The Board, real call, Mr. Benble.
Bren.
Mr. Seuss.
Bren.
Ms. Gilbert. And Mr. Rich.
President.
Before we get a motion to approve the agenda, I'd like to have a number three discuss revenue options. So if you can add to that, bottom number three, discuss revenue options. We'll have a review case of Mr. Porter and a page of Mr. Rich.
Father, we're blessed with this rain, but we pray that you'll keep folks from harm from rain, that it won't cause damage to property or to loss of life or harm to people. So we're thankful for what you give us, but God, right now, we just pray for people. We pray for the members of this commission as they discuss matters that involve the county. We pray for wisdom and discernment and patience. We pray that you'll watch over them and guide them every day. You with us all. We're so thankful to live in this country and this county. Watch over us in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've added a number three, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm not getting a motion. One second.
All those papers say aye. All those votes. We don't have any awards presentation. We're heading next time. Don't want to speak.
I'll see you then.
Alright, discussion items. First one would be the Paint Rock Valley School Award. As of right now, we haven't got any letters of anybody wanting to be on this board, so we need to figure out how we're going to move forward with that. Anybody got any suggestions?
I thought we had had one, but we didn't.
Yeah, we had to remember we had somebody call and ask about it, then nobody was sending a letter in.
That historical board is kind of throwing a few people off. I mean, there was already a historical board already created in the valley. And I know this is pertaining to school, and you know, we've tried to put a little meeting together with the people that I've talked to. I got some papers from Middleton here about a few weeks ago on some expense deals, and everybody I've talked to, well, some of the different ones, not everybody, but been so much flu and sickness going on, they have not been able to attend, but they are still involved. And they felt like they needed to meet with some of the board members from the school system is what their thoughts are.
And that's what the board...
I told them, I said, "Well, that's the reason they come to us to sit in attendance, is wanting us to form something and kind of take it out of their hands and carry it to us." But they're not really wanting to agree with that. So I'm just kind of bringing the information of what has been told, the people that's involved in the school over in Paint Rock Valley, that they felt like they needed a little more information on what their plans was, what they was planning on doing, if we could maybe keep part of the school and move forward that way. So I said, "Well..."
I understood it from, so pretend that they need, I mean, if somebody's going to take it over, correct me if I'm wrong, this quarter, but I mean, it'd be, that'd have to, somebody's going to have to pay the electric bill, the insurance, all these things to get the upkeep on the building. And that's the reason we're going to create a board to see if it's even feasible to do that. And I mean, we kind of at a loss about where we're going now. Because it, I mean, we could hold it open for another...
That's what I had told them, I tried to table it, put it off a little bit, and maybe we can get together. Like I said, Mr. Porter had addressed the issue, and I had got one paper he had sent me, but it was not really what we needed. It was really basically whether the school would have been closed. And I had talked to Mr. Dukes and got Mr. Middleton, and he gave me a whole stack of papers. But some of the ones that was involved in kind of keeping the school maintained, they have had some health issues. And I talked to him, and I said, "Come on the agenda." And they said, "Well, can you table it, or we can kind of go for a further discussion?" And I said, "Well, I'll present it."
I think we need to set a deadline in one way or the other. I'd like to see something done with the school personally, but you know, I just, I don't want to leave it open ended for a whole lot longer. The way I understood it, this whole process, correct me if I'm wrong, but the school board approached us, had the building, and we were looking at the community, they said, "Just let them stay." They would have come up with a business model of some sort to show how they could pay for and the upkeep and the utilities. So we're going to form a board, they were going to do this research, get the numbers together, and come back to the commission with a plan, if they come up with a plan. So you know, we're not getting any letters, people wanting to be involved, you know, to be a part of that community. Do we need to have a meeting over there? I mean, we'll go to the committee, the community and have a community meeting, explain that to them, and you know, give it a couple of, three weeks or a month.
Well, that's what I explained to them, and it was kind of put on our table to make things happen, you know, far as putting something together.
It would be better to, that way, get everybody's input on the community, what needs to be done, or what we expect to be done, you know.
Our next work session will be March 4th. You want to try to do something that quick?
We could do, we could do a meeting, and then, we normally advertise the boards two weeks, and this has been months. So if we have a meeting there, and then leave advertising up two weeks after the meeting, and then let that be the deadline of either we're moving forward with the board or not.
Alright, Mr. Seuss, if you're here, do you know, can you get somewhere for us to meet, set up on the 4th?
I think Mr. Dukes had said we could use the facility at the school.
Okay.
I think he had said that.
Yeah, I'll check and see, but that's not, that's not too far off the 4th. Like I said, there's been so much sickness, I don't know, you know.
I mean, that gives us two weeks.
Two weeks.
To just have a community meeting, and then we'll set a deadline two weeks after that. That'd be a month. That should be more than the time we want that community to get through two weeks, if they want to be on the board or not, send in the board.
Right. But I tried to explain to them the historical deal, that was just a name, but since it's already a historical thing, it's already set out there, they said, "You're trying to use an identity that is already there, it's causing problems." And I said, "Well, I'll address that." I said, "Well..."
I mean, if a board is based, enough people to set a board name.
Change the name.
Name whatever they want to name.
Yeah.
We just didn't want to call it the Hart Board, because of past issues and...
Well, I told them I'd make some more, I said, "We're running up at night," and I said, "I know there's already a historical society above." And they said, "Yes, we've got all the paperwork, all the things to prove it." So, but, so you said, you said March the 4th?
That's our next work session.
Have a meeting?
Yeah, you made it, said I have a work session here, rather than at the Paint Rock Valley School.
Okay, I'll try to get something to do.
Okay. And then what, y'all want to plan that for?
Maybe around 6:00.
6:00.
It's large, so...
One more morning of our community meeting, we're not having a 6:00.
Look, we'll get our words played.
Does anybody else got anything else on that? Next we discuss courthouse security. This got brought up after we got a paper on a meeting for discussion. So is anybody got anything to add to this?
No, I, first, I want to say I have no desire or intention or want to do away with courthouse security. I want to say that first. I know there's been some discussion, and some department heads approached a few, I think, about wanting to do...
Employee entrance.
Employee entrance and stuff. I guess that's what this meeting's called about. The way I understand the law, what I've researched, the presiding judge, create a, could be, courthouse security committee, and then the committee comes up with a plan, the plan submitted for the commission, the commissions are the ones that approves, and they approve the plan and own it. If we didn't have a plan, if the commission removed their support of the plan, the commission could still have courthouse security in the same fashion and manner that they're currently doing. Do y'all have anything else to add on it, or what?
What has really brought this on? I mean, was there some different ones to the courthouse that contacted you?
Did you tell them about which part?
Well, I know we had some issues back at earlier when we was trying to figure out, trying to...
Yeah, it still have anything to do with the guards that's out there.
Yeah, I know that. But I know the judge, Hope, met with us, and you know, she went over some things, and she had said something about having a meeting sometime in the previous time to go over things again, and such some stuff. Is that basically what we're on?
Yeah, I think we had a meeting after that.
Yeah?
Me and you was there, I think me and you know when it was up there. And then since then, I've had some, they contacted the office about employee entrance, and then there was some issues about other people using other doors, and that's what got the discussion.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, what they were saying.
Yeah.
I mean, all the doors need to be secure, I mean, we just can't have anybody walking in off the street, coming in, or you know...
Yeah, I mean, once you have the security, that layer, I don't feel like you should or could or ought to remove it, because it's a liability. I mean, once you've had that and presented that, and it's been in effect, you remove it, if there is an incident, to me, you're opening up a big liability.
I had a thought just last minute.
As far as the board, I know the presiding judge is the one that gets to appoint the board. I never knew I was on the board. And I got that in the mail last week, that I was pretty much being told to be a thing, that I didn't know what...
We were requested to be at the meeting, I believe that's what the order said.
I think it was the issue that's a order, is what the issue was.
The order set the meeting, and all members were requested to attend.
Is it going to be open like we did last time?
It's fine with me, it is. I have nothing to hide.
Well, I'm just asking, I didn't know if it's something that we're going to, is it just for these people here, or is it for everybody?
For whoever wants to attend.
Okay.
I thought you got a copy of the order the last time we had a meeting.
I didn't have one.
It was delivered to the commission, maybe. Where do you want your notice of sin? I brought all of it to the commission.
Yeah, I received, I received this later.
And Mr. Chairman told me you were there, but you decided not to stay for it.
On the first meeting that you had? I have no problem with setting down a productive meeting, but to have something that's just, to me, it was not going to be productive. And my time's valuable to me. I spent a lot of time this past week on commission stuff that I had to spend away from my business and my job, and if it's not something that's going to be productive, I'm not going to be involved, if it's just something that...
So you don't want to be on the committee?
I really, I see no reason for me to be on the committee. Anything that the committee produces will come in front of me on the commission. I really don't want it.
But they recommend the plan that we adopt for security in our courthouse. Did I understand, were you suggesting that we eliminate the security plan that we have, and that the commission determine what kind of security we have in this courthouse without the input of the court or the security committee or the sheriff?
The commission has the authority and the ability to remove that plan if we so decide to. I just wanted to make sure I...
Is that what, is that what you say, Mr. Porter?
The, I say that the commission has the authority to control the courthouse, period. Entrances, exits, everything. And of course, the way it's set up is that the commission adopted the plan that the committee recommended.
And all members of the commission were on the committee so that they all had input. That was the purpose of being on the committee, is so you had input into what we developed, because you have the expertise of knowing what the county can afford and what we can afford.
But the bottom line is, you know, the chairman and the commissioners worked with the committee before, came up with a plan that everybody approved. But you know, the commission controls the doors and the hours, and the courthouse is open and everything else. So it's, to that extent, yeah, I would agree with it.
So what I understand is you want to revoke the plan that's been in place since 2009?
I hadn't said that, I wanted to, but I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have that authority, that's what the commission decided we wanted to do.
We worked very hard in 2009 to develop a plan that everybody could agree on, and we all worked together then.
Yeah, I don't think nobody's even seen anything about doing away with the plan.
I thought that's what he just said.
No, he was just, make sure he understood the law correctly about that.
Well, the plan includes, based on the expertise, the witnesses that appeared before us, the expertise of the witnesses that appeared before us, it was recommended that in order to have a secure building, you have to have limited access to that building. That is the key to a secured facility. That's why the two doors were, all the doors were closed except for emergency exits. The north and south were left open, and then the law enforcement could use the basement for the keep on. If you eliminate or open those two doors and eliminate that provision from the plan, how are you making this courthouse safer? That would be the question I would ask each of you to answer. How are you making this building safer by opening those two doors?
Well, I mean, I think you've already, I don't want to hash this out again, but I mean, my thing is there's a lot of keys that's already out there.
Those doors are locked, though.
That's what I'm saying, there's a lot of keys that's still floating out there, and if we go to a card reader, then it will make all them keys obsolete, and you'd have to be an employee to even access.
How does it make the keys obsolete? The keys are still...
No, they'll be on magnets, and you won't use a key to use a swipe.
Now, I...
Well, no, I mean, if we done, if we have to redo the system, the whole...
Why would you want to, though?
We got to.
Why? Why would you want to open?
The security guy says that we got to change, we got to update our system, it's fixing to not be working.
What security guy?
Hemberg.
Hemberg, put it in.
It's time to upgrade the software and stuff.
That's what I'm talking about, so we're outside...
I'm not signing on to security badges, because I could see where that could be an issue, where somebody else could get somebody's security badge. Now, if it was something biometric, where you thumb reader or something like that, which they're not much more expensive than a badge reader, where it had to be that person, you know, I would want to discuss that and look at that, but that's not, you know, I just don't think a badge...
Does anybody can draw a badge and anybody can pick it up out there?
I don't understand why we're even having this conversation. I mean, it's worked great for 10 years. We've not had one incident.
There was just a question that got brought up to me, and then I had brought it up to the commission, because, to see if that's something, it may not be nothing the commission wants to do, but it's something that, if something is sprung to me, then I feel like it's warrants.
Why would you want to do it? That's the question. Why?
I mean, the reason it got brought up initially, I've already, we've already discussed it, was because people had seen our employees going around, it had offended some people going through security. So that was when it come up, was if we had employee interest like Madison County...
Say it's going through a card swipe?
Do what now?
You think it's not going to offend citizens to see employees using two other doors?
If there's a line of people waiting to go through security, and an employee in plain clothes walks by...
The answer to that is give everybody something to go around your neck if they work in this courthouse.
That's a lot cheaper.
I'd be fine with them showing...
They don't necessarily have to be a card swipe, just an identification card.
All they need to have is...
That way, when they walk by these people in this line, they'll say, "Oh, they work here." That's why they don't have to go through it.
And you've got a security guard eyeballing that employee if they come in to see if something's amiss. Where you don't have that if you have, open these east and west doors with a card swipe. Cards get stolen.
Yeah, I don't think I'm okay with a card swipe.
I just don't see how it makes the people of Jackson County safer when they're in this courthouse to open those two doors for any purpose.
I'll agree with what Chuck just said right there. I mean, you know, lines sometimes come in, and they have motions going around, I don't like that. I mean, I like going around, but I feel like I'm no better than them other people entering their pockets out there.
Absolutely.
And what he was talking about, identification, they said, "Well, he's employed here, that's the reason he got to skip the..."
I'm all for that.
We don't get that many more complaints, I don't. I used to get a few when we first started this. I hadn't had a complaint about the doors in a long time. Y'all may get them, I don't.
We might get one a month, one or two months if I've been here, but it ain't...
That's part of working the public.
But when I saw this on here, you had to excuse me, because I hadn't even seen you sitting there, and I was wondering, that's why I asked the chairman what brought this on.
Well, it wasn't for me, I can be sure.
I didn't know, I mean, like he said, we've got things we have to address, and but, you know, far as being on the board, and I'm not Mr. Benble, I didn't realize until the day we had that first meeting. And I mean, you've talked, you know, after that right there, and I feel okay with that.
And I assured you that I would, if y'all wanted the meetings, we would have the quarterly meetings. It just hasn't been an issue, that order that I entered was setting the quarterly meetings for the year. I included all of you on the committee, because I want your input. So for this to succeed, we've got to work together. And everything I'm hearing, it's, we're not working together. I mean, our chairman called a meeting with the department heads to talk about opening these doors for employees.
No, I wouldn't, wouldn't...
And I wasn't. Well, you told me when I got here that a vote had been taken.
A vote had been taken.
Or you had gone around the room asking everybody how they felt.
Well, no, yeah, I did.
About opening those doors.
I mean, if it was just department head, that was one of, and we didn't even, because of that, we didn't even get, we didn't have a meeting the next day, just to do, that was for department head business, not security business. That was just one topic of six or eight that was going to be discussed. I never intended for that to be a two and a half hour, you know, discussion just on security. I said, "It was just wanting to get their feelings before I went to them and brought it to them." That was obviously, like I said, that's my job, is whenever something comes up, I got to bring it to this body, and then they can vote however they want to vote, you know, but I do what I'm supposed to do. So do you have anything else on courthouse security?
I just, you know, I can see the, about the card reader deal, you know, I'm, I want to make sure that everybody feels safe, and the building is safe as possible. That's the main thing, in my opinion, you know, but I just, I have heard a bunch of people talking about even me walking around the security. But I know at times when you have court, you've probably got people late for court, waiting on to get through, you know, yeah, but I'm for everybody going through the thing myself, you know.
Would be, that I'm all for it, too. I've been here when we had no security.
Right.
And it's not a good feeling. I was here when two people got shot on the courthouse grounds, and ran into, and ran into the building, and the screaming, and the bloodshed. It was not a pretty sight. I don't want to see that ever happen again. And we've had something that's been working for 10 years, and why would you want to make it less secure than what it is right now? And when you open doors, you're making your building less secure. I don't care what anybody says, you can ask the sheriff, I think he would agree with me, that when you open doors, you're making your building less secure.
That's all I got to say. Mr. Seuss?
Anybody else?
Judge Ho. I agree with Judge Ho.
Anybody? Next we discuss revenue options. If there's going to be a... We have been meeting with legislators to try to come up with a way to, we've got to get our revenue stream up. I mean, that's just, there's no yes and a no about it. We've got to have some kind of growth mechanism if we're going to repair these roads and do the things that, you know, people expect us to do. But the sad thing is, is our hands are tied, but we're limited on what we can do, because everything that we try to do is, the legislators are, you know, it has to go before them, they have to agree, then they decide on which route we take. We discussed, was it three, was it three different options? Mr. Benble?
Yeah.
One of them was...
After Ms. Please, we just talked about three.
Our one was...
Do you want to go with the specifics of them, or just wait? I mean, next week, we've got to send a resolution to them.
Yeah.
Through, Ms. Gilbert not being here, I didn't know.
Yeah, right.
We need to have that discussion, and we need a resolution to send to them to try to get, you know, something, either on the ballot, or something done through the law to take care of a problem. I agree with that 100%.
If something's, we have to think of a right date by next week.
With us to be throwing possibilities out there.
No, I wouldn't go through each one, I mean, eventually, I'm just saying, we have, we got three different options that we're going to do. We're going to have to do a resolution no later than Monday, to whatever we're going to do. Because I'm afraid it'd be too late if we wait till the next work session.
Really, there's several different ways to go about it, there's two options, there's, you know, I mean, there may be several different ways for each option, but you know, either a new tax, or you know, redistribution of some taxes already collected. That's really, one of those two things has to be done in some way, shape, or form.
Well, I mean, I'm going to step in and say, I don't, I don't think it was something that was, that went undone. I mean, we had a meeting, they met with us, it didn't come together, some things likely all wanted to hear, but you know, there was different things on the table, the tax deal, it drifted off into other plans. And I think the word got crossed up on some deals, it did not come back, it was going to benefit us. So I mean, for us, them, they are the ones that has to do some of these things. But I think part of it was kind of out of context on where it went. And you know, I don't want to put out anything out there either, because Danny wasn't in, meeting Linda, and you know, to be, to be certain that everybody had to be on the same page before we could even move forward on anything. You know, I mean, we are in dire need of funding, but you know, I think that, you know, we were probably to blame on a lot of things that happened to me, put it that way, so.
Well, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying it's got to be done.
Exactly.
This coming Monday is, I mean, we can't just keep waiting and kicking can down the road, and that's what we've been doing, it's just, and I felt, I mean, we have got to make a decision and move forward with it. That's where, that's where we're at. Mr. Rich, you have a...
A lot of people, the general public, needs to be advised on how the tax money gets distributed. I seen, you said stuff on Facebook, that one man said, "He's not going to buy nothing in Jackson County gas, didn't matter stuff," he said, "Because we wasn't spending the money or tax money right. We don't get sales tax, go straight to schools." You know, a lot of people think it's just because we've got sales tax, it's all coming...
I always did enjoy on the receipt of accounting tax, that thing, because it's not accounting tax.
Only tax that we get off our roads is the gas tax, after the city, you know, gets their disbursement, and we get the crumbs that's left, very little. And we're going to have to do something. I agree with that.
What you said, Danny, is a thing that needs to be addressed, and I've told the legislator myself on that. You know, you go out there, 90% of the people don't realize, when you go out there and buy something at Walmart, 4% of that goes to the state, 3% to the city. four percent of that goes to state, three percent to city, two percent says county tax. We get zero. That is split between county board of education and city board of education. And they have no idea that it happens. They simply.
How you get it out to people?
You, yeah, county tax.
County having meetings that's been in the paper, I don't know how many times, I don't know how you, you, you get people to retain that information to receive it and retain it because you still have people.
It's like you said, it does not need to be on that little county tax thing. I mean, or they have school tax on it. I mean, it's, it's divided among them. And if we had part of that growth that they're receiving right there, Jackson County would be set up to kind of move forward, so.
Something's, people's got to be willing to give and take at the same time, so. But something's connected, so it had to be done. I mean, the roads that we got, how many roads we got need to be worked on?
Eleven hundred and something miles.
Eleven hundred miles?
Yeah.
We're down eight miles like. Ninety-two seven here before.
Well, we're, I mean, Bob could tell you if he was here, the county needs to know. We're putting out some pretty big checks.
Right.
You know, each month right there, the city schools and county schools, and them buses have to travel these roads. But that money does not come right here for this board to move forward with.
Well, one, one of the, you know, I mean, we, we're going to have to get back to where we're paving. We need to be paving a hundred miles a year.
We've got to have something paved where the people are recognizing something being done.
Well, a hundred miles a year, they can recognize that. And that's, that's the, that's what I'd like to see. Uh, and it's doable. But we, we're just going to have to all get together and agree and get it done. Uh, and like I said, I think it's something we're going to, we're going to have to move forward on. Unless y'all can think of a different way, I think Monday is going to be the latest that we can.
I agree. We have to do some kind of resolution Monday.
We've got to move forward or something, you know, I just, and the quicker the better, but I don't like throwing something out there and just right off. And, uh, they said, well, you know, there they are going with another tax deal. It didn't pass before. Don't throw a tax at me. You know, a tax is something that everybody needs to understand, and, you know, it's like Mr. Rick said, they have no idea that we don't involve.
Well, I think that we need a, a good PR firm which are promoted and with earmark it, and they take it all exactly where it's going.
It's got to be earmarked.
Definitely got to be earmarked. That's what killed it last time.
Exactly. If it's not out there explaining where that money's going to be spent, it will not happen.
All right. So, we're going to just plan on, try to get, we'll try to get another meeting set up and let everybody know when it is. Between now and.
If the commission calls us to another meeting.
That's what I mean. If they do, then we'll let everybody know. If they don't, we're just planning on moving forward with some resolutions, bringing to the meeting, and then the commission can vote on whichever one it will go with.
But what if, did we get them to come in next meeting and make with them or?
Oh, we can request it. We, I can request it, kind of. All right, Mr. Ford? I got to do, we got to make things through the Fund One Hundred.
Yeah. If you want to move forward with Fund One Hundred, um, then you can put that, if that's where you are now on.
It is.
Okay. Then you set the rules aside, you set the rules aside, the commission to vote on a matter tonight that is not on the agenda. The first thing you need to do, and it has to do with amending the local act that currently exists for dispersal of those funds under Fund One Hundred, the road and bridge fund.
Uh, so what I'll do is I have to get a motion to set aside the rules for this one vote?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I guess before I do that, you want to explain what, or do you want to explain, Mr. Campbell, what Fund One Hundred, what we're doing, and why everybody doesn't know what this is?
Sure. So, Fund One Hundred was a local act, as Mr. Porter alluded to, that was created in the eighty-eight, I believe, and it was, uh, since amended in two thousand nine. Um, the, it was, the local act was a, a relocal sending gasoline tax, excise tax. And that allowed for, initially, for purchase of materials only with a certain amount of expense on unpaid roads. It was later amended in two thousand nine, which included an allowance for equipment purchase. Due to the reduction in manpower to budget constraints, the material purchase portion has outgrown our abilities essentially. So, there are some monies there that we can't access because of the verbiage in the law, the way it's written, and the fact that it can mostly all be spent on materials. So, a rewording of this, which is what this essentially is, would allow those dollars to be obtained, to be used for any road and bridge expenditure, but only road and bridge expenditure. But those expenditures would then include equipment, materials, and labor.
Thank you. So, just to make sure everybody's clear, it can't be moved nowhere else. It stays in roads and bridges. The only thing changes is the percentage on material versus equipment.
Just make the dollars more flexible.
Yeah.
And you, there'll be spent on roads and bridges only.
Right, right. I need a, a motion to set some rules aside.
I'm going to make a motion, set the rules aside for this one.
I'll second it.
All those papers I have, all those codes. Okay, now I need a motion to approve the resolution, Fund One Hundred.
And, and this, if I can, this will be a resolution, which we should adopt, to send to the legislative delegation for them to, uh, propose to the legislature an amendment to the act. So, that's what you're doing, is you're really, you're not doing it yourself. You're requesting that the legislative delegation amend the act.
That they amend the act, that this money be transferred for road and bridges only, is what you're saying.
It's, it's, it's always been for roads and bridges, and it will still be just for roads and bridges, but I think it's, it's on One Hundred still. And just use it for.
Just to get more flexibility.
Correct.
All right, I need a motion to the Fund One Hundred.
I'll amend the motion.
I'll select the motion. All those papers I have, all those codes. Um. Next, well, I guess, I need to adjourn before we go into this special meeting for voting precincts or just.